This is our March 22th Monday meeting. Before we get started, this time we're gonna have the pledge of allegiance. I will demonstrate the Rock today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, founded God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Father, we stand and let us pray when we're gonna have the invocation. Father, we thank you now and we bless you again for another day. Lord, another opportunity to come and to discuss and to handle devil business. We give you honor and praise and we just bless you today that we're able to be in this place and we thank you for democracy. We thank you for the U.S. of A.D. We pray for our leaders in our country. Lord, we pray for this local government. Lord, that you give us clarity of thought, eloquence, and speech. Help us to do what's right in your sight, in Jesus' name. Amen. Moving right along with the agenda, this time we have some motions. Guys have had opportunity to view the agenda as the agenda stands correct. If there is no additions to anything of that sort, we ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
We got motion.
And we get a second.
Second.
And do we have any discussions? All in favor? In opposed? And approve. Moving down to number four on the agenda, approve a minutes. Two twenty-two seventeen, three oh-one seventeen, with a call meeting. This time get a motion to approve the other minutes.
I get money.
Okay, do we get a second?
Second.
All right, do we have any discussion? Any discussion all in favor? In opposed? All right. And five on the agenda, Mr. Chairman and Council.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and Council, just a few items to update you. A, funding various community entities. This is my quite often call to say that, you know, we've done such a big part in them and importantly, invested a lot of money. You know, I strongly feel that that's our ejection to the community for jobs. So I'm just encouraging that we carefully choose the things that we fund. I have provided a form which now asks anybody that asks us for money to show us how they use the money and how they're gonna sustain it. That's just for information only. The auction update went quite successful. Most of y'all were there that day. We yielded about fifty thousand dollars on the money and I think that went beyond expectations. So we did a real good job with that. Charles is to be applauded for all the work he done. Melissa did a lot of work and we had a lot of people, as you know, working on that. To remind you, the Northeastern Technical Dinner is March 28th at 5:30. All council members are invited to that. If you choose to go, just let James Sue know and we'll make sure that we got your RSVP. Mr. Chairman and other asked me to keep you better updated in terms of our road and bridge work. I did give you some paperwork. That only represents their regular work. Anytime they get call-ins, that's additional. Melissa provides me that on a weekly basis, so I'll include that starting weekly. Okay, if you choose to have more than that, just please let me know. Allow me to take two liberties, one that you need to know that I haven't told you, but the Saffron Power Team, that's the co-ops, they're having a symposium tomorrow or the next day, so I'm gonna attend that. I'll be available by phone with whatever you need. In the meantime, on the ground, Richard, I'll be looking after the county. Finally, one other liberty. We've got our FEMA claims in, just about all of them, and we're looking, provided they're granted, we're looking over a half a million dollars on that, which is good news because this is all money that we've already expended. That's my report, sir. Any questions?
Sir? I got one. Mr. Berry, on that truck we talked to you about putting by picking up trash on the side of the road?
Yes, sir.
Had any chance to do that yet?
You talking about lettering it?
Well, getting where they can get the trailer, I mean, what they can use it, not necessarily lettering, I mean. They're putting on the road with the trailer and letting it go through the district. Kinda do like Birdman does with the sheriff's office.
Let me tell you what I'm doing to work toward that. We've got one personnel out there that is, I think, days away from being able to supervise inmates. That's what I've been working on so we can have him to independently do that. So, yeah, working on it, but.
Okay, that sounded good.
Let me add, I got a voice. We did real good with the office and so a lot of confiscated stuff down there at the sheriff's department has been down there for years and I'd like for us to help us say on sale that stuff.
I think we can, only way we can do that if we can't find title and I'm not sure if this is definitely, it's how these crap.
Yeah, Liz Jackson knows how to help the sheriff's office and the stuff he can't find, he could go forward, judge and get a court order and we'll figure it out. Just a lot of stuff we can make, raise some money off of that.
Let me refer back to what you were saying when you were talking to Councilman Coward. And I support that reason being in the past we've had that. We've had, I think gentleman's Michael, I don't think he's no longer working with the county, but he would take a crew out to your district and they would pick up literally stuff of that sort. And I know I called you on the day and told you about my concern, but it's kinda getting out of hand and I think that's definitely something that we need to try to, try to get it up and moving as soon as possible.
Okay. Mr. Berry, on that, when you said they can't be round inmates, I thought they would cut grass and then it can be round inmates, you.
That's, we can switch, that's right, we can switch it that way. Thank you, Mr. Berry, sir. Anything further? Now, we're gonna move right along on the new business. Got our report, Mr. Webster Rogers, this year 2015, 2016.
Thank you, sir. We'll address, we'll address the bill after the audit presentation, is that okay?
It's fine, it's okay.
Mr. Rockton, your name, sir?
Greg Ackerman.
Mr. Ackerman, if you would, sir, for those that are new to this, would you explain your position?
Yes, sir. First off, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Chairman and Council, for allowing Webster Rogers to provide the services to the county. We have been on contract, I think, for three years now. We are the independent auditors for Hillland County. Each year we come in and provide the audit services and that entails the report that you have in front of you. Now, each of you should have had access to this report through Jamie Sue a couple of weeks ago. I think it was an electronic version or maybe a hard copy printed off. What you have in front of you is the exact same report, it's just bound in a blue cover. Each year we have to come in, well, based on the county is required to have an audit on an annual basis. It's part of the legal requirements of the county and we come in each year to perform that audit. We're required to be independent of the county. The county hires us, but past that, all of the audit oversight, all of the audit reporting is in our control. We make the samples, we decide what we look at, we come up with all the calculations of the different analytical procedures we perform and we put together an audit report. Now, our audit report are the pieces in front of you that have the Webster Rogers letter on them. The rest of that report that's in front of you is management's representation of the financial position and the financial workings of the county. You actually have a outsourced service CPA, Walden Wildman, who comes in and assists the county in actually closing the books for the year and she also prepares the financial statements, our draft financial statements. From an audit perspective, what we do is we come in and we look at those statements to determine that they are materially correct representation of the county's finances. We do that through various testing procedures, various sampling procedures. We do not look at every transaction of the county. We're way too delinquent for that to take place. What we do is there's very strict standards and regulations that we follow from our profession that says this is what you do to perform an audit. These are the steps you walk through and we go down that list every year to perform those steps and that allows us to put together the audit report, which is the page three, which is the first letterhead you see with Webster Rogers' name. That report is dated March the third, which is the issuance date of the statements, when the statements were available for use. Shortly after that was should have been when you got the hard copies or got the copies available to you to be able to look over prior to this meeting. That report will tell you that you have received an unmodified opinion on the financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2016. Unmodified opinion means that it's a clean opinion. There is nothing that we found in our testing and our, or our examination of your records and your financial position that told us it was not materially correct. Those items are, and material is a calculation that's done and it changes annually based on various different factors, size of the county, total assets, total revenues, and funds of the county, different, like your general fund, the debt service fund, those type of individual items that are looked at, all of that works into some standard calculations to determine a materiality level. And what we have found is that there is nothing within these statements that we see based on the standards we apply that would be not a material representation of the county's financial position. The other piece that you have that Mr. Jamie Sue handed out is this letter, this is the required communications to those charged with governance, county council. I just need to run through these items because these are the pieces we have to make sure we go over with you. The first paragraph just basically tells you what year the statements are on, what we're doing it under, and under government auditing standards and uniform guidance. Uniform guidance deals with the grants, there's separate work you have to do there. Says that we had an engagement letter with you, so we were under contract and we issued the opinion dated March third and it was an unmodified opinion. The second section talks a little more about changes, things that changed and it gives you important notes, basically estimates. There are estimates built into these financial statements because there are certain numbers that are, you don't get an invoice for. Those things have to be determined, like your collectability of your accounts receivable, that's one of the ones listed on here. The carrying value of your assets, carrying value is what the net book value is of something you purchase, vehicles, buildings, those values change. It says those are estimates. They're estimates because you have appreciation on it. Anything that's a capital asset has appreciation. And the big estimate that you have in your books that we all talked about a couple of years ago when it went into play was pension liability, which the federal and state government said now the counties have to show that number that they're responsible for or that's applicable to them, a part of the state retirement program, and that was the big one that went into play a few years ago. The other items on here, we did not encounter any difficulties with dealing with management or any of the staff, anyone there. There are no uncorrected statements. We didn't find anything during the engagement that management said, no, we don't want to correct that, we want to just leave that like it is, so there are nothing like that in there. They're trying to think, I don't think that there were really any, anything that we found that was an adjustment to your numbers after the fact, if it was and it wasn't material numbers, it was some smaller reclassifications just for presentation purposes. We didn't have any disagreements with management, with anyone in management, as we were talking, we started off the engagement and I think right about the time we were starting is when the new county administrator, Mr. Berry, was coming in, so we had a little bit of a change there, dealing with someone new going through that process, working up to there. Management representations, one of the things we received with the statements was a management representation letter. It just said, it's a requirement with our engagements, it says that management has believes that the statements they provided us in draft form to audit were a good representation of the county's financial position, that they understood their responsibility for those statements and they had the ability to take responsibility and ownership of those statements. And the other items are just some more general information that it gives you here, talking about the statements and what level of work is done. There's some schedules in the statements that are required related to the pensions that are not audited pieces. Anything that's unaudited, it says that on the face of the schedule, so you can tell what had audit work applied to it, what didn't, and all of that's explained throughout the statements. The financial position of the county, as far as your overall net unrestricted position, your net asset position didn't change significantly from the prior year. You had budgeted to go into your fund balance sum and you did that, you didn't go into it that much more than you had budgeted. You had a few items in there that were a little outside, but there's some budgeted actual schedules in there that show you those changes. I'm sure you're all very aware of those, you see them on weekly, monthly basis. Everything else went fairly well through the statements. There were a couple of items that we noted with some of the grant reporting and some of the outsourced services you would note used, those are listed in here, I'm sure you saw them, they're in the back where the grant numbers are, the scheduled expenditure to federal awards. And everything else was in line with what we looked into. We didn't come up with anything that caused us of any major concern or any issues that were not shown here or anything else that we felt that we needed to bring forth to you as major problems or concerns or anything that popped up as a major red flag from an audit position. Are there any questions related to the report?
Yeah, I'd be glad to ask you one of.
Yes, sir.
I think I heard you right, said that when you came to do the audit, in the past, I've heard this version that you're talking about sampling.
Yes, sir.
Provided already. I think you said something to the effect that you came in, you pulled the sample.
We do that every year, yes, sir. And sometimes we send that information over, but what happens is, and we discussed this a little bit, I think, in a prior year, but I'll go through it real quick.
Let me ensure you understand what I'm saying. Saying that sample, or you saying, starting sampling, was the sample was already provided for you when you walked through the door or you came in and you looked at a bank of documents and you pulled from that?
No, sir. The way we do it, when I say it was ready for us when we walked in the door, what we do is we get a lot of information electronically before we come onsite to do a work. We do a lot of planning procedures from our office or from somewhere other than on county property. We receive the trial balance, which makes up these numbers. We receive the draft financial statements and a lot of the reconciliations that are, what makes up your fixed assets, what makes up your bank account. We get that information. From that information, we ask for certain things like check registers, you know, give us a check register, show us how it ties into the numbers you gave us that are the ending balance on your bank. And then from that information, we're able to say we want to see X, Y, and Z. So we pull the samples before we come onsite. We tell them, someone in management, whether it's Richard or someone in AP, we send them the items we want to see, so when we walk in the door, they have those pulled ready for us. But we determine what items are pulled, we determine which ones we want to see, and we make our calculations of which items we need to see specifically, independent of anyone on the county side. So we're in total control of what we're going to look at when we get here.
Sounds almost like a Nazi moron, to be honest with you. One minute you say you walk in the door, you say the information is sent you prior to, and you say when you come.
When I come here, it's ready for me. What I meant was, I send the information that I want to look at before I come because I get the check registers, I get the bank information, whichever things are normal pieces of our information we get before we come here so we can look at it and do our planning because we have to do certain calculations based on what those numbers are. And those schedules they provide us have to match up to the financial information that we have here, so we have to get them all at the same time. Then from that schedule, for instance, a check register, we'll get a check register and we'll go through it and say, we want to see check number one, check number ten, check number twenty-five, and I get that check register before I come onsite. I identify those ones that I want to see and when I come onsite, they have check one, check ten, and check twenty-five pulled for me to look at.
And what are you looking for when you just go to next check?
It's different things based on what area we're in. One of the things we do with the check registers is your accounts payable if you're in it. What amount to make up the liabilities that you're showing on your balance sheet or your statement of, statement of net position, I believe is the terminology, it's a balance sheet is what most people know it as. We look at, we pull checks that were cut after year end, which are outside of the audit, and we look at those to make sure when they give us the check, we ask for the information that backs up what that payment was for. So we get an invoice from a third party, whether it's one of your vendors, whether it's coming from the state because you're paying them for something, whether it's like a school district requesting their, their money for reimbursement. All of that information is pulled to support what the payment on that check was for. So that's the information we're getting. The only thing that's ready when I get onsite is the sample I ask for them to pull. Because for them to be able to pull the information, I have to say I want to see check one, check ten, and check twenty-five. And we don't want to wait until we get onsite to have them pull it because there's a time lag there of them being able to grab all the documents along with doing their normal daily procedures. So we give them those upfront of these are the items we want to see. They pull those and they have them in a stack for me when I get here so that we can just sit down and go through them.
Anything further?
Yeah, Ray, hit me explaining for the council because I have to explain to these guys. Under contract, I think, worth thirty-two thousand dollars, and you and I talked about this, but we received one invoice for twenty, then another for another twenty, and then finally with itemized, she was fifty-one, so it goes beyond what we budget for in our contract. You explain to me, please explain to council about the change orders, so to speak, and what I understand it.
That's essentially what it becomes. When we did the RFP, I believe that was three years ago, I believe this is the third year of that, when you sent the RFP out and asked for quotes and asked for proposal amounts, you base that initial year on what was in play for the prior year as far as standards that are up there, legal requirements that are there, and based off of what the operations of the county were for the last year that was completed. Because the next year is, at that point, is an unknown. You don't know what activities may change, you don't know what new funds may be there, and you don't know what laws and regulations and standards are gonna change. Each year, as part of the audit report, there's a page, there's a, in the notes to the financial statements, there is a section that's called pending implementation of GASB statements. And there's a list of ones that will be, that have been issued new sometime in the, usually it's within the past twelve to eighteen, maybe twenty-four months, and those come into play sometime in the next twelve to twenty-four months. And I say come into play, they become applicable to where you have to address them in the financial statements. So those changes take place, when you're doing the initial RFP, you don't know about those and you also don't know what changes are gonna take place within the county from that point going forward, so you base those numbers off of what happened in the prior year, the operations of that prior year. And those changes, sometimes when they're there, they're very small, other times they're very large. One of the real large ones that took place since the, the original contract was in place was GASB sixty-eight, which was the pension war. And that became a very involved standard for the whole industry and for all of the constituents that had to implement it in their financial statements. And that's not just a one-year thing, it has continuing requirements that have to be dealt with every year after that. So that makes up the bulk of the changes there. There are other things, you know, this year there was considerably more work done in the grant arena because of the items that came up. When, when we're going through an audit and something seems a bit out of the ordinary or something seems to be, you caught them red flags before on some of the things we talked about, if there's anything like that or if there's just something that doesn't on the face make a hundred percent reasonable sense, you have to go another step to make sure, did it really make sense and was it just an odd transaction or did we not get all the information on the front end? And that happens every year to some extent of, okay, we need to dig into this area a little bit more to make sure we understand why, some of the big things like economic development, one year economic development will be this level of expenditure, the next year it might be three times that or it might be a third of that. So those changes, you have to look and go, okay, did everything get picked up there that was supposed to get picked up there? Did everything that got picked up there need to be there? And those changes all are outside of that initial scope of what is expected. That RFP, the price back on the RFP is your best guess if everything stayed exactly the same from the prior year.
Question for you, sir. If I may interject, Mr. Berry, how long you, y'all been doing audits?
This is the, the third year of this particular engagement.
How long has business been in your business?
It's, it's been around for a lot of years now.
Okay, could you say, sir, is it reasonable to say if you were given a proposal that you've seen some of this stuff before, you've seen changes before based off your prior experience of doing audits? And if that is to be so, would not it be reasonable to say that doing your proposal to the county to pass a contract, wouldn't it be reasonable to say that that should have been in your contract somewhere that chances are we may run up on some changes?
If I'm not mistaken, it does say.
Here's the problem we have, sir, we, I think it's thirty-seven thousand dollars that we initially agreed to pay and it's jumped from thirty-seven thousand, I think about fifty or sixty something, I mean, that is like doubled, I mean.
I understand, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. It's a balloon payment, so to speak.
I understand.
You blow it up and certainly we wouldn't want to do business if it's just to keep blowing it up, could've ran up to a hundred five dollars, I don't know. So basically what I'm saying, if your contract should have probably been a little more detailed if it were not, was it detailed to that payment, Mr. Berry?
Well, I hadn't actually looked at the contract, but I guess my question, Mr. Chairman, is, is it industry standard to do three-year contracts? Because it's easier to swallow one year than.
There are multiple different standards that are out there. There's not necessarily, I'd say, an industry standard. Usually three, five years is what a lot of people are doing and that's because when you expand over a three-year window, you're getting, the first year of an engagement is usually a lot more intense because you're trying to learn that engagement, you're having to document everything from scratch and that sort of information typically takes significantly more time, so when you do a three-year engagement, that initial upfront cost kind of gets expanded over. When you do one year at a time and you have changes between different providers, they each have to come in and start from scratch again, basically, because you don't get to carry over what someone else did, you know, you're trying to get yourself acclimated to it and get to where you're comfortable that the numbers are materially correct. What's the, what's the contract say is that they're based on the information that was provided as of that point in time. Anything that changes after that gets billed at different rates, hourly rates, based on whether it's. hourly rates based on whether the, the complexity of the work, what's going into play, and what kind of things actually change. Because what has happened, especially over the last five, eight, maybe ten years, is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, which is the oversight that says what you have to do to get audited financial statements. They have been issuing statements on a fairly voluminous, um, fairly voluminous every year. It's not just one every few years. And for a number of years, and I've been in the profession now right at twenty years, for the first eight or nine years I was in the profession, you didn't see that much change. Things had kinda moved along and they were staying pretty standard. But with the state of the economy and the state of the world as it is right now, everything seems to be changing on an annual basis. And it's very difficult to project what's gonna change. And when you do start projecting what's gonna change, it's very difficult to project how some of those changes are going to affect each one of the entities you're dealing with.
Can I ask you one more question then, Cal? Cal has a question for you.
Yes, sir.
My question would be something, and I'm gonna leave it. Uh, if you had employed me, sir, to paint your house, and we had a contract to do it for twelve-hundred dollars.
Yes, sir.
And I ran into a situation, and I didn't tell you about it, and I went in and fixed the situation and charged you twenty-four hundred dollars. Sure, would you pay me without me letting you know that I ran into a situation?
Well, we, hopefully, we have some conversation related to it. And that's typically what.
That's my point, sir. It should've been with the last guy, not Mr. Barry, that we just got here. It should've been some conversation somewhere.
In each year there.
Let me, let me finish.
Okay.
For how to you guys just billing us without our knowledge? Just billing us and, "Okay, it was thirty-two thousand. Hey, we ran into a situation here, and I'm gonna charge them thirty-something dollars or sixty-something dollars an hour." It should've been, my point is, it should've been some conversation somewhere that should've said, "Fellas, look, this thing's gonna be this," or, "Well, we ran into a situation, it's gonna cost you this extra million more dollars."
Yes, sir.
And you guys done it and said, "That's a bill."
Well, I believe there was some conversations over the years. Um, I'm not sure, you know, when, when Rodney, or Mr. Barry came in, I'm not sure. I'm not always a party to all of those, um, conversations. But typically, that is what's happening, and I believe that had happened in the past.
If we don't pay him, there'll be some more conversation on.
I'm sure there will, yes.
Figured it would be.
Great. I had Chuck numerous emails, and he wasn't, wasn't even responding about the bill from last year.
Okay.
When we found, where there's any ten thousand dollars, give them another different number and all that. And he never would respond. Before we agreed this, is there any way you could get him, maybe come back, talk to the administrative committee, and then let bring something back to the council? That would both of y'all do.
When, when we were, when we were working with Mr. Barry of coming on a date to, to come over, we had talked about February and we had talked about this month. And we were talking about that in January, I believe, Mr. Barry. Both of the dates that we needed to come over for the, the standard council meeting, Chuck had previously issued, like, I think today he's, and actually, I think it's most of this week, he's at a conference. I'm not sure which one it is. But he is at some sort of, uh, industry conference that he was scheduled to go to since sometime late last year. So that information about his schedule, and I know we had talked to Mr. Barry a few times about trying to set a date to make sure we could get here.
Administrative committee will be willing to meet the job on your schedule anytime. You'll set up a date with administrative, we can come anytime, or weekend or anytime.
I'll, I'll work this meeting and Chuck.
Pay me until we, we call.
Until we all.
Just don't pay it till we meet, so we all.
'Cause I know the council's discretion. I know Mr. Barry had asked you for a detailed report, and what he showed me earlier today wasn't much of a detail.
Yes, sir.
So we need a detailed report from, maybe Daniel wants to charge this.
Okay.
Anything further from the council? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, moving out on with the agenda of the new business, letter E, bid for recreational session stand, Randy?
Okay, we have two bids. Um, one is from Randy McCollum. And here's this for twenty-five hundred. And then we have, um, Sharon Wright Curry. Hers is three thousand. Three thousand for Sharon.
All right. Any discussion?
Good. I could just add one quick. Just will make sure, I don't think there is, but if there's any conflict upon any of the council members with this person, I just wanna make sure everybody thinks about that before that.
I mean, I know Randy, I don't know the others.
I know more for.
As long as it's not me, family members.
What kind of, uh, contract would we do with them, with these bids? As far as contracting it out?
I've not seen one before.
We don't do anything?
Yeah, we do. They have a contract.
Okay.
I have to get it, I'll have it right here with me at this point.
We may need to temper with that a little bit. We've been doing this for a minute. It's been, it's been done in the last year.
Oh, yeah.
This is not, this is not new, I'm telling you.
No, we've done this for the past three, four years.
We can't look at it. All right, this time, we need a motion, um, to set one of these bids.
I'll make a motion, we set the three thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a second. All right, and we have any discussion? We have a discussion, all in favor? Is that focused? Your vote, Mr. Bear?
No, sir.
Okay, see your hand go up.
Well, I'm thinking that, that Sharon Wright might be my sister-in-law.
You may not, you may not.
I'm thinking, I'm just trying to figure out. I know about braids, I don't know if she's a braider or a rat. I don't wanna vote on this, if that is my sister-in-law, that's why I'm here.
So do you wanna strain or excuse yourself at this time?
Yes, sir.
All right, you will accept that, let, let me show you. All right. Moving out on with the agenda. Got a request, petition against the medicine session assault.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be with you all. First of all, I wanna thank all of you all for your service. We believe that, um, local government is probably one of the most important positions that we can have. So thank you so much and thank you for, um, supporting us. Thirty years ago, we started our twenty-four-hour crisis line. And, uh, we've been trying to provide that kind of service since that time. Um, April is Central Salterinus Month, so I'm gonna, Jimmy, do you, is it okay if I give these?
Sure.
Okay. And, um, I'm giving you a tail with, and please put it someplace. Crisis line is there. At the back, there is a, kind of a, a little green, um, handout, and we will, we put those in church bulletins. If, if y'all are willing, we will, we get folks to print for us. And, um, it's important to get that word out. I brought some posters also. Um, we've got with us, one of our board members, whoever Paul Gaskly, and also our new Director of Resource Development. We've gotta raise about twenty-five percent of our budget every year, so we hustle. Ms. Barb Stedman came to us from the Governor's School of Math and Science. And she is willing to help us out, and we are thrilled to have her. Um, about a year ago, Paul's son, Conan, hosted a fundraising event for the Grant Children's Center, which is a Child Abuse Assessment and Treatment Center. We had Matt Sandusky. Right now, uh, the president of Penn State is on trial. And what Matt said to us was, "If you all don't do anything else, have a conversation about what happens to boys." So what we are doing this April is we are having a series of men's roundtables. We're not gonna be involved as women. We need you all, and we need you all to talk to each other. What happens to boys very often guns up and goes unreported until somebody's in trouble and somebody's hurt, and then it's a mess. And those boys that Jerry Sandusky hurt were vulnerable. A number of them were poor, and they didn't have a lot of status. And nobody wanted to believe that somebody of Jerry Sandusky's stature and power and influence could do what happened to those boys. So let me just say this, please, in whatever way you can, take the time to talk to each other. We're either going to be part of the solution or we are the problem. And so I would ask you this, this April, we've got a, we've got an event on the twenty-sixth that our staff is, is doing at the Dillon Wellness Center. We'll get you some information on that. Um, please do what you can. Invite us to come speak to your church, Paul will speak. One of us or, or one of you all, we'll, we'll provide you the information. But, but a lot of what we deal with is under the radar. It's private, it's personal, and it's difficult. So please do what you can to help us out. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. Thank you so much.
Well, we appreciate all your help, whatever you all can do.
Thank you, guys, for all you guys do. Thank you, thank you so much. Moving out on the agenda, the new business, letter E, request American Council Society?
Listen, you wanna figure that, well, there, there's a request out to fund them. We fund them every year at different amounts. My suggestion would be at the five-hundred-dollar amount, uh, Mr. Chairman.
All right, do we get a motion to that effect?
I made that motion, give the five.
Okay, do we have a second? Sir? Okay, any further discussions? On the table. Moving out on, uh, new business, letter E, special procurement code, minimum financial expenditure limits. Do we get a motion, or do we have a conversation at this time?
Y'all like to make a motion. First, I wanna say our county administrator's doing an excellent job of going for us. But the finance stuff that we walked into, we wanna change it from a ten thousand dollars to a five thousand dollars. Anything with five thousand dollars has to be voted on by council.
And I wanna add to that, I do, I do wanna add to that. And I'm gonna say, concerning Rodney, I would do, uh, county administrator, very conservative guy, a real good guy, he's not a wasteful spender. So this is not anything, not to affect you. But however, in the past, if some of the citizens in the county might've read the bill and heard, or had talked about, "Oh, we missed eight-hundred thousand dollars," or there were some accusation that we might've misappropriated or misunderstood, I'm not sure. However, bottom line is saying that we were not, uh, watching the finances as we should have. But however, this will put all of us together. We're more accountable, concerned to spend it. And we took to the table, all of us, and we, we together, anything with five thousand dollars is, is service, Mr. Bear.
Mr. Chairman, the, um, procurement code, just, just wanted to point it out. There, there has been confusion about the way it was drafted, I believe, whether professional services fell into any of the limits that the council had imposed. And so I, I do, I have proposed for more than a year now that that be changed. However, it is adopted by ordinance, which means we have to follow procedure to change it. And so, um, I'll be glad to draft a, an amendment to the ordinance where you all consider and put it, get it, get it, get it going on the next agenda. If that, if that is, uh, what I, what I think I'll do, if I understand what you all are attempting to do, I will draft a, an ordinance and get it to the fin, probably finance and administrative committee, perhaps. And then, if they okay it, then we'll present, we can present it in the next meeting.
That's, that's. And Alan, how about maybe with the professional service, we might want two dads, like you said. And that under the same scope, under the five, five thousand dollars.
I understand.
Thanks, sir.
So I'm not gonna get it the first week, it doesn't get north of, I'm gonna leave that alone until you adopt one.
Gotcha.
I'm gonna raise that one. All right, then we gonna leave that until the attorney gets back to us. All right, uh, moving out on under, uh, new business, E. We just talked about that, we're gonna leave that. We're going to F now, the recreational request.
Okay, um, in your package, you have one, um, from Harold Moody to pay a hundred dollars to American Cancer Society, relay for life, or bake for his recreation. Um, then there's one from Fort Chapel Baptist Church. They're asking for a donation for their church, 'cause they're having a program that they're sponsoring on April the first.
Okay, I do Fort Chapel, fifty dollars. I do fifty. We got nine of those students.
Then we have, um, Antonio Vault. Um, he is the head coach of the twelve and under AAU travel basketball team, and he's requesting your help and support for the year.
Let's see it, too. Thank you.
And then we have, um, softball for four. Um, two hundred dollars for softball for men and women, two dozen each, for Jack Scott's recreation. And then I have one from Outreach Family Fellowship. They're requesting a donation for the You Are Not Alone Special Need Support Group, which is a part of Outreach Family Fellowship. And April is National Autism Awareness Month, and they're hosting an autism awareness event, um, it's a awareness day for Outreach Family Fellowship.
I'm just adding that, as a parent who sat here with a special need child, it's kinda tough, you know? But, uh, this is a good thing to do.
Get a hundred dollars.
Take a hundred dollars, man.
All right, that's all I have.
All right. Need a motion this time to approve the recreational request. Make that motion. Then we need a second, so, any discussion? All in favor? Any vote? All right, moving out on with, uh, old business, the seven, letter A, airport update.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna let the attorney speak on this a little bit. I just only wanna preface with, uh, our economic development matter in the executive session may shine more light on this topic as it concerns the airport. But we've got some upfront expenses that we have to go through to make requirements for some grant money, but Alan, you can cover that.
This, um, you all may remember that there was some grant money available for us to acquire, what are known as application easements on the approach to the, to, to the land trip at our airport. Um, the problem with that, and I started the process, notifying the property owners and had a meeting with the property owners. The problem with it is that the county would have to foot the bill for all of the expenses, the surveying, all of the, um, appraisals, and the acquisition of the land upfront. And we have no idea how much that would be. I, I mean, it, it depends on the appraisals. I mean, we don't, we don't know what that would be. And then we would be reimbursed the money from the grant. Um, I've talked, I've been talking to Rodney about it for quite some time now. And we're of the opinion, the grant, the grant's not gonna be available after some, the end of May. I just don't think we have time or the time or the finances available right now to pursue it. And we wanted to bring that to you. If you disagree, we'll see what we can do to make it happen. But, um, you all know what we just spent and what our finances are now.
Can we just table it?
Well, we, we, we may not, there may not be more grant money available next year for it. This may be the end of the grant if we don't pursue it.
Charles Taylor might be able to tell that anybody using the airport. I don't believe anybody, I don't believe, I think just it, I don't believe.
Just one airplane parked out there.
Why would we spend money on that if anybody using it?
Well, let me just, but let me clarify though. We would spend the money, we would get at least some of it by, it depends on. get at least some of it by, it depends on how much, and I don't remember how much the grant was.
About $150,000.
$150,000. If we went over that, that's the county's.
Good recommendation, Mr. Barry. Well, I think I'll shed some light in our executive session that might, might help us make a better decision.
Then we'll move by this until the executive session. All right, moving out alone, old business, seven, B, B, Fund 45 discussion.
Mr. Chairman, under Fund 45, I lived in the Indian up before, in Robert Doug, and Fund 45 was in the general, our general account. And we ran up short of money, the capital, when we got the capital improvements last year, and that money was used to buy equipment, to pay someone to do this, Senator, all that money was spent. And I'd like to make a motion that when this deal bond that we got that's coming in in April, to give Lakeview and Loudon area the money designated them back. Lakeview has $531,722.51, and Loudon had $173,261.75. I'd like for that money to go into separate accounts, one marked Lakeview area infrastructure, and another marked Loudon area infrastructure. I'd like to make a motion in there.
Motion on the floor? Need a second?
No, sir.
Okay, got a second. And then in the discussion.
And the only way that money can be moved out is for the council, four councils, we have to vote that money out.
If we come up short on something and the county needed it, and the four councilmen to vote to use it and it already be put back in later date when we want it better shape.
So you're basically telling me that you want to earmark this money for Lakeview and for the Loudon area, and two different counties.
That's right. Take it out of the general fund.
It'd be the county council district, not any city, it'd be the district, because the people in the district paid that money. I guess we're in this.
We have a motion, second. Motion, a second, we have a discussion. Mr. Barry, we got the meeting to do?
You know, I, I do have concerns, what alleviates my concern some is the, you've objected that if four councilmen would vote that we could use that money for operating the county, gives, gives them more, gives them more comfort.
Yeah, that's my point, I was trying to, Matt, don't think I earmark it like that, think I use it at the stretch of the council. Okay, all right, we got a motion, a second. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right. Moving out alone, financial court.
Okay, I do have the sheet, but this is, as of March 21st, in our general fund account, we currently have $1,910,641. We've got the first citizen CD of $2,001,000. First bank savings account, $193,577. Anderson Brothers have $200,060, a total of $4,305,276. Of that money, the debt sinking fund makes up $3,160,057, but leaves us some debt available funds, as of March 21st, $1,198,729.
All right, that's your report?
Yes.
Do we verify that? Anybody have any questions concerning the financial report?
Mr. Berry, have you got online banking yet? County legislature should let you get some online banking.
No.
All right, Madam Clerk, Councilman, I want to just say, I wanted to say to you concerning the last piece of business we just had, concerning the Lakeview money, we make sure we get that documented real good, and I know you do, and the Councilman Scott down here talking about it not being used only in the unincorporated areas, not for the cities and all that stuff, is that what you're meaning, right?
That's right.
Loudon has not put no, Loudon Councilman, who's been, Councilman saying that it's not consent.
I said Loudon area was included through.
It'd be his county council district, because everybody in the district paid this 4% of money.
So that's going to restrict your county from using that money if they have to? You don't have no city people in your, in your.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it, everybody, that's the whole county council district.
So we need to take it out and just say, oh, county council. Well, we can't do an unincorporated area then, we just, you can't limit it there because you got people in the municipality.
Well, that could be both.
The district covers him.
I understand your meaning, but I want to make sure he understands.
He covers everybody in the district.
Got it.
Okay, tell me one more time.
Anywhere the county got a district, unincorporated or unincorporated. All right. Moving out alone, okay, number nine, artist reading, A, first reading, an artist by Dillon County Council to amend the official zoning map of Dillon County to reset on a parcel of land known as tax map notice, portion of 80, 92, 68, 62, 80, portion of 80, portion 17, 49, 06, 98, portion of 68, portion 130, 39, 88, previous property owner, E. Coolen, Colen Bryant, Joseph Tyler, current property owner, South Carolina State Quarter Card, the tax map numbers, 080-00-00-112, location along west side of CSX railroad from West Countryside Road to West Furfield Road, Dillon, South Carolina, change from rural RU to general commercial GC in order to operate the inland port.
Mr. Larry Jones has already had the public here and everything might be okay, so.
Mr. Jones, can you give me a down, can you sum all that up for the artist, in just a small?
It's pretty much what that incorporates, Mr. Chairman, is that we had portions of three tax map numbers that constituted $158.18. Okay, and now that it's already been turned over to the inland port, it's now one tax map number only, and it goes from just the west side of railroad track on West Countryside Road, over to the other road over there, constitutes $158.18. Initially, as it was on RU, it wasn't suitable as far as zoning was concerned, inland port operate there as general commercial, if we.
Thank you, sir. All right. Moving out alone.
Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion, if we approve it, first reading.
Okay, motion to approve, first reading, get a second. Second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, under artist number nine, first reading, to amend artist number 12, dash zero seven, providing for the closing of the demolition dwelling unfit for human habitation.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think county council is wanting to clean up some of our areas, and we've looked in other counties of what they've done, we've had some existing, but I think based on my conversation with you guys, of course, it'll be levied if not paid, but we're looking probably to set up, it's my understanding in the conversation here, but we're looking to put a, a set fee upfront to add to our amendment, our attorney may want to add something.
Right, and this, and the, and the full ordinance will be available for second reading and asset reading, but essentially, my understanding from the committee was that they would like to change the current ordinance, which, which allows anybody in the world to make a complaint about the property, to requiring it to be someone who lives within two miles of the property to make a written complaint, or the sheriff of the county to make a report about the end property. And then to set a flat fee that will be charged, and to also allow provision, and this is, this is part of what we're working out, trying to work out on the works for to present for second reading, is to, to put a consent trigger in there that, to speed the process of still have to pay the money, or get there to levy on the taxes, but to put a consent provision in so that they can go ahead and contend to the, to, to the matter. But I'll be working with Mr. Jones about, about that, get his input as well, and we'll bring it back to the, to the planning committee, and we'll have second reading on instead of the pen.
Okay. Now, I think too, if I'm not mistaken, I thought I heard some conversation concerning, is it going to be at the consent, will it be at discretion of council members in, or how have y'all got that far where to get?
I do not believe that the council can exercise discretion in a matter like this. The council can pass the policy and direct who carries it out, but I don't believe the council can, can exercise that kind of discretion as a matter of law, as state law.
And do you know for sure, Mr. Berry, you need to research?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm, I'll say I'm 100% sure on that.
Is it the discretion, Mr. Jones?
Whoever you put in the ordinance, but right now it's Mr. Jones.
Okay, because we need to, and the reason I'm saying is, I want to be clear with this, but I know that you're working this, and I understand this, but however, there's a lot of areas just have abandoned houses and stuff of that sort, and it needs to be cleaned up. We want to make sure that we have an artist in place that is usual friendly. We don't want to make it impossible for people to be able to get some of this stuff cleaned up. Some of the things in the past have just made it, have just tied the hands of the council, and it's tied in the hands of our citizens, and we don't want to do the, we want to make sure of that.
Interesting.
All right, sir.
The first reading now, and then the amendment of my title.
That's, that's what I'd ask you, to approve our title.
Okay, we do the first, because we don't have to have an artist on the first reading. I need a motion to approve the first reading. I make that motion to approve the first reading. Second. Second. In the further discussions, all in favor? Any opposed? All right. Moving out alone, first reading, artist authorized pursuant to Title II, Chapter 44, Code of Law, South Carolina, 1976, execute delivery of a fee and lieu of aid for the Lord and Tights agreement by, in between Dillon County, South Carolina, and a company known to the county as Project Freedom, a sponsor and one of more sponsors, one of more sponsors affiliated to provide for a fee and lieu of aid for Lord and Tights incentive and certain special source revenue credits and other related matters.
All right, Mr. Chairman, this is what we talked about in our last meeting, we have Claire here representing these two solo projects. We're still working out some small details, but I have comfort of suggesting we pass this first reading on these CND today.
Claire, do you have anything you want to tell us today, and know your presence here? We thank you for coming.
I just want to thank you for considering these two projects, and like Mr. Barry stated, we're working on getting the draft language for you, but we ask you to pass it title only tonight, get this, moving on, I know the companies are anxious to, me to go back and report to them that the county's, that Project Freedom.
Could you give them more of a, where it's located, I mean, or your actual location at least?
Okay, um, I've got, just one second. I think I brought with me what Mr. Simmons presented to you last time. I'll do my best to try to describe that.
Rodney, make it there, Rodney, you know where that that went off?
Well, we, we spoke about one that's not too far from Purdue, over the Harborsack Place. I can't.
One is near Lakeview.
Yeah, Lakeview, that's right.
Scotland would be just on the north side of 95. Basically, same thing that was discussed with Mr. Simmons, I don't really have anything new to add about the project since we had that meeting, so I don't want to take up your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Need a motion to approve the first reading? I make that motion the second. Second. Any all in favor? Any opposed? All right, moving out alone, D, authorized pursuant to Title II, Chapter 44, Code of Law, South Carolina, authorized pursuant to Title II, in Chapter 44, School Side, 76. As a matter of execution, delivery of fee and lieu of aid for Lord and Tights agreement by, in between Dillon County, South Carolina, and a company known to the county, Project Scott, a sponsor and one of more sponsors affiliated to provide for a fee and lieu of aid for Lord and Tights incentive and certain special source revenue credits and other related matters.
Same thing, sir. Your representative projects.
This will be part of the first reading as well. I need a motion. I make that motion. Okay, need a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussions? Not all in favor? Any opposed? All opposed. All right, resolution number 10, to express concern over the physical impact on H. 3726 on some smaller counties of the state of South Carolina.
Mr. Chairman, there is, this is a resolution that some other counties have encouraged us to, other small counties have encouraged us to pass, and what essentially is happening is that many of you know that the state retirement fund is experiencing some financial difficulties. And there's a bill in, in the House that would put the burden on the employees and the, and the employers, the county, the county in particular, in our case, to pay in more money to help steady that fund, their retirement fund. Of course, for instance, Bamberg County, who's one of the counties that sends this information, would, they, they did some analysis and determined that they would have to raise their millage rate eight mils to, to, if this passes. And they may not even be able to do that by law, there, there's a cap on how much you can, how much you can raise the millage. And what this resolution does is, is point those facts out, authorize the county administrator to present this resolution to our county delegation, and ask them to consult with the county before, before voting on this.
Sounds good. Sounds good. Need a motion, it's time to pass that reservation, resolution to support small counties concerning the special.
I make that motion.
Okay, need a second. Okay, do we have any discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, moving out alone, number 11, appointments, Dillon County Public Private E and B. Sorry? No, sir. Thank you, sir. Just about the 50. Okay, resolution number 10 and B, to close Farley Drive.
Mr. Chairman, we're in negotiations with Project Badger about an expansion which will require us with grant money to acquire some land for them to expand upon, and that road, that land is on Farley Drive, part of. But there will be a new road that's going to be cut as part of this project if it, if it goes through. And I'm trying to get the process in place to get the road, the Farley Drive closed so that we can, we'll be ahead of game and ready to transfer the property when the time comes. I've already ran, I've run the ads in the Dillon here, we think the code will run tomorrow. The signs are posted, acquired by state law, notified, there's one property owner that'll be affected, I've notified him by certified mail. You approved the resolution, I intend to file a petition next week, and, and, and the courts office to begin the process, and we'll get a little.
Are you immediately in opposition?
Sir?
Are you immediately in opposition?
None, none yet, and I suppose what I, I do not, I don't believe that the negotiations are going to fall through, I think this project is going to happen, but I'm, I'm not going to finalize this until we know that's going to happen. I will, I will be holding back on that as long, as long as.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Barry, attorney. This time I need a motion to, to pass this resolution to approve the Farley Drive.
Make a motion to close the Farley Drive.
Second. Okay, motion to the second, any further discussions? Not all in favor? Any opposed? Moving on, number 11, appointments, A, 11A, Dillon County Public Private Economic Development Partnership Board, District 2, Jack Scott.
None, Mr. Barry.
Four appointments for Mr. Scott. Ryan, moving along, 11B, PD Community Action Partnership Board, Mr. Glenn Clell, I received a letter from PD Action Community, Mr. Glenn Clell serves on, on their board, and from what he tells me, he's doing an outstanding job, and they would want him to be. And from what he tells me, he's doing an outstanding job, and they would want him to be, uh, reappointed. Do you have anything, attorney, him, you've dealt with?
Uh, normally, he's of outstanding character.
All right, this time I need a motion to reappoint Mr. Glenn Clell.
I made a motion to reappoint Glenn Clell.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second. All right, um, any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor on Mr. Glenn Clell appointing? Any opposed? Any opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, we have a, an executive session on the agenda, uh, economic development matter, Ben Zegler legal matter, financial pursuit. And, um, you're welcome to go outside of the chamber just to wait. I can't promise you how long it will be, but I'm hoping that it won't be too long, but there will be no action taken in the executive session, and there cannot be. In other words, basically, one of the, there's no voting in the executive session. South Carolina has what they call old vote law, sunshine law, you have. Any action that we take must be done in the general, in general vote.